Yeah.
Yes, I'm saying.
I was just think, I was just think starting and y'all walked in, so I had to say that. I forgot to say all right, all right. Today is Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty five, and it is nine oh three A M. Uh, we're gonna start with a prayer. I'm gonna ask Bill to say a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we call your presence for this name this morning, thanking you once again, oh Lord, for life, health, and strength. We want to thank you, Lord, for this county, uh, court been able to come together and discuss, uh, the things that to, uh, to handle the business of Newton County. We just pray, Father God, that we look to you for our answers and our decisions so that things will be decent and in order, and that it will be beneficial to the citizens of Newton County. We just thank you for, Father God, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting in order. Uh, we do have a quorum. Uh, I'd like to acknowledge the guests that are here. Do we have anybody set up for public? All right, we're closing the public hearing. Um, we'll deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one, certify the twenty twenty five appraisal role for the Newton County Commissioners Court and actress Melissa Burks.
I'm Melissa J. Burks, Newton County Tax Assessor Collector. Call them if you have time, that the figure disclosed below, a portion of the A or B approved, and certify the twenty twenty five appraisal role. This appraisal role was certified to me by Christina A. Kelly, Chief Appraiser of the Newton Central Appraisal News Program, which lists properties taxable by Newton County and constitutes the value of the twenty twenty five appraisal role for Newton County. County twenty twenty five. Total price value, three billion, six hundred nineteen million, four hundred thirty seven thousand, two hundred and five. Total assessed value, two billion, one hundred and four million, one hundred sixty four thousand, one hundred seventy three. Total net taxable value, one billion, six hundred fourteen million, four thousand, eight hundred forty three. Total appraised value of new property, fourteen million, eight hundred fifty one thousand, seven hundred seventy eight. Total taxable value of new property, thirteen million, two hundred seventy one thousand, nine hundred and thirty. For lateral road, our total appraised value, three billion, six hundred nineteen million, four hundred thirty seven thousand, two hundred and five. Our total assessed value, two billion, one hundred four million, one hundred sixty four thousand, one hundred and seventy three. Our total net taxable value, value, one billion, six hundred nine million, one hundred fifty three thousand, eight hundred sixty six. Total appraised value of new property, fourteen million, eight hundred fifty one thousand, seven hundred seventy eight. Our total taxable value of new property for lateral road is thirteen million, two hundred thirty one thousand, nine hundred and six. Any questions?
Three copies, three copies of it, so.
One for the auditor's office, one for the judge's office, one for my office.
So, I got one here, I'll throw it on. Go with you.
He sent over.
We got three copies of this, they have to sign it. I'm signing very carefully, shall I sign it? All right, we've got that one done. Item number two, we certify the anticipated collection rate for tax year twenty twenty five.
Sure, I've given you all backup documentation. Certification of anticipated collection rate for twenty twenty five. I'm Melissa J. Burks, Tax Assessor Collector for Newton County, who hereby certify to the Newton County Commissioners Court, and anticipate the lesson rate of one hundred percent for tax year twenty twenty five. See, I get this, this day of all was twenty twenty five.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna back up a second. Uh, we didn't call for a vote, should we call for a vote on? Yeah, I moved, I moved along and I thought, well, wait a second vote.
Except, they said, except the approved, yeah.
Okay.
So, except.
I'll make a motion that we approve to certify the twenty twenty five appraisal role. All right, I made a motion, Commissioner Hopson's second, all in favor? All against? All right, now we can move along. Want to make sure we did that. No, 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 uh, so, so we got certified at a hundred percent collection rate for twenty twenty five? Well, that's, that's a pretty good rate.
So. Excuse me, I'm short stacked in my office.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the certification of anticipated collection rate for twenty twenty five at one hundred percent.
Excellent.
All right, motion made by me, second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor? All against? All right. So, item number three, um, I'm gonna read it out, but, uh, Chris probably said we're gonna take no action on this. Selection of requests for bids for R F P, uh, twenty twenty five dash oh three, resurfacing of County Road thirty one twenty five, thirty one twenty six, and thirty one twenty seven for Newton County Precinct Four, so.
So, one of the things, uh, I talked to the auditor about was bids coming in higher than what I had, um, planned on spending on the roads. So, I wanted to make sure it was okay to go back to the low letter, which is significantly lower, lowest of the two, and just say, you know, the bid was this much more than what I planned on spending, so I'm not gonna do the job. And then if that person or company would say, well, we'll meet that bid, then come back to the court and say, is that possible or do we have to?
When we say this is all I can spend, should have gone in R F P, maybe it's not fair to go to one and not go to each other and see if they can meet that.
Even though it's eighty thousand dollar difference between the low and the next one, okay. All right, well, what I'll do is I'll just, uh, repost it and include some other folks in the bidding process. I think Brother Danny's got group in Curberville, you said, Danny? We'll, we'll take no action and we'll work to get that reposted with this court.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
We'll take no action on item number three. Uh, item number four is discuss and consider making changes to the nutrition center operation procedure that provides clarity and understanding of the operation of the program.
So. Where that come from, Judge? I know, I guess, three months ago, we talked about the procedure as it's written versus, you know, the actual mode of operation. And there was a couple of things that jumped out at us was the donations weren't approved by Commissioners Court. And then, you know, just the procedure, money being collected each day, what being turned in each day, and what being. So, I just wondered, we talked about updating the procedure, where we stood on that.
I'm not really sure on it.
That's a question, again.
So, some weeks ago, months ago, we talked about the procedure that you sent us all wasn't actually, it didn't match the current mode of operating. And that, and then, and then a procedure doesn't even include the age groups. Um, so, the donation was a big issue. Then collecting the money and how the money is managed and turned in, and the procedure not referencing people under sixty years of age. So, have we updated the procedure or where do we stand?
Yes.
So, it references people under sixty.
Uh, so, the private, what we call private pay.
Okay.
And we changed our data report to reflect that in detail so that it would be clear to the auditors.
Okay, so with that, are we capturing the names of the people under sixty as they pay or how do we?
Always capture the name.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up, in two thousand and twenty four, going back and looking at the financials, we showed that only one person under the age sixty eight from two thousand and twenty four. That.
I have no idea. Wait, I can go back and look at twenty four on my side. Oh, because what the, the problem is that the private pay money and the combination money will be entered into the county booking system under one account. But sure, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's how they were entering in there. I mean.
In order to look.
At one time, they had different phone numbers, but I think when they doing it, they just put whatever number you put on there, that's the number they put on. That's how they enter it. The phone number you put on there is the phone number that then you're then enter into the system, to the deposit. So, what I was on your spreadsheet, I think you and I looked at it, it was the wrong phone number at one point. You come to my office that day and I said, under sixty, it should be that number.
Reflect that to be.
Whenever Morgan was here, she had two phone numbers. And you look at back at twenty three, look at twenty three, um.
Eighty more dollars was collected in twenty three.
Yes, that's the fact, yeah.
Yeah, so twelve people under the age of sixty, and then in twenty four, seven dollars was there.
Twenty five, when she came to my office, we entered, she gets two different numbers, under sixty and.
And I guess where I'm going is all the donations are supposed to come before court. And in twenty three and twenty four, we collected twenty three thousand, approximately twenty three thousand dollars in donations. None of that was approved by court. And as I understand it, it's, we have to, right? So, the procedure as it is doesn't match the letter of the law as I understand it. Maybe I'm not correct on that, but we sat here, we talked about it, we, we've known it now for three months, and we're still collecting donations and not bringing, bringing them before court or doing anything. I just think what we're doing over there needs to match what we're supposed to be doing. And I, I, not, not a fault of anyone, but we, somehow, we gotta get our arms around it. That it's, it's not going on exactly the way it should. It's not being operated exactly per the government.
But can we make like a broad motion that, uh, the money is collected, donations for meals, uh, be accepted by Newton County on a week or a month of, how do you do that?
We need to bring it monthly, uh, paid, you know, for certain donations from Tango, John Doe, John Smith.
Okay, but their names has to be spelled out. I mean, we can't accept donations unless we have the name of the donating party.
But does it have to be announced on, in the public?
Yeah, it's public information, it's gotta be.
Public information for those who are stupid. There are no questions yet, but I mean, some people, there are a lot of people I've, I've been in donating organizations, but a lot of people do not like to be called out. They'd rather not because, you know, it's raw questions. They, they just wanna donate, have to call. I'm just saying, there are, I know for our school supplies, the Burke deal this year, there were some people that said, I will not donate if you don't be putting the size of my name. And it's spent their money, it's their heart, you know, people. That, that's, that was just something to consider. If, if there's a way we can do it without calling, calling nobody's name, I don't think they do it because of roll call.
So, one thing that I've suggested a while back was setting up something like Burberry, kind of the Sheriff's Office, the full one, who are those kind of people who wanted to donate to the cause, want to donate to the program, donate to them directly. So, the Blue Light Group, for example, will be a person to donate to them, and their, I guess, purpose, their mission, and their mission statement was supporting Sheriff's Office. So, people could donate to them directly, and then if Sheriff's Office needed to buy water or whatever food, that group and bought it for them and never paid for it, then how would we be able to call it a separate organization, or a nonprofit that supported them? And so, the same with the Powell Hotel, Nutrition Center, whatever it might be. But if you're donating to the county, then it's gotta come to court to be accepted. And so, the way that it's set up now, they're donating directly to a county program.
And it does say in the, in the laws that the name has to be counted, called out.
I don't, I don't know.
You have to have the name, and she would go to the auditor and every, all the organizations. And it's available there. If someone wanna call in and ask, how many did you have? We got the information available for them, but as far as just outright, that ain't right.
We would have to look at it further to see, look if this, they accept donations from this exhibit.
Well.
Right.
Well, there is another avenue too, is they do have a, uh, five oh one C three group, friends of the nutrition center, kinda like the library. Uh, now, I don't know, can they accept the donations?
This is, it's got guidelines saying that the clients will be allowed the opportunity to make a contribution for their meal. Now, I've talked with two different directors in different counties that are county-run programs, and they're doing the program exactly as we are. At the end of the month, they're sending a report, it goes to court, it just simply says, we received next number of donations. Many of the county guys.
I'd like.
Now, I did speak with the manager at Decco, case manager for our area, and she will be glad to, um, be with the board at the, um, be there.
I think there's a difference though between a client that is wanting to contribute towards a meal, and they fall off of the program, versus if I wanted to be, and I were to pay for my meal, because mine is, I'm purchasing my meal, they're donating towards.
So, our question is, are you wanting the documentation of those who are purchasing the private pay people? Or not, we?
There wouldn't be a donation, there shouldn't be a donation.
Donation, I'm paying for it too. So, my name would not be submitted to debt card either, because I'm, I'm not, the county's not gonna be grateful for me.
Right.
But anybody that's donating, they're not required to pay, they just wanna pay towards the, and it does need to be reported. But then in a separate lawsuit, private pay, because that money also can be deposited.
Yeah, and I totally agree, everything ought to be accounted for, and the names and all of it should be accounted for, but I just don't see a need for us to get out here and write and read off a bunch of names every court day. Yeah, please.
List for each name, person over the age and was a client, regardless of their, it's not stolen.
And, and I could see us once a year, or when I have a couple of times a year, whatever, to report, you know, how the people that are coming consistently or something like that, you know, if we want. But, but as far as every month, it's just.
This is the thing, this is the thing I look at. We all sit around and we wonder why no restaurants can make it in Newton County. You can go over here and pay seven dollars if you're under sixty at the nutrition center and eat. There's people that needs that type of assistance, no doubt. But we're, we're responsible for the well-being of Newton County. Right now, we're showing in our accounting books that in the last two years, thirteen people under the age of sixty have ate at the nutrition center. And we know that's not accurate. We know it's not correct.
Information on the phone number, that account said that money was for meals under age sixty. That is not always true. That is true to anybody who does not want to be applying. Some of those people are sixty. You have clients that come, they're part of the program, they, they eat their two dollar donation meal or whatever, and then they will say, hey, I wanna take a, this is really good thing, I would like to buy my wife a meal. So, they'll pay full price. That wife may be over sixty. The original line on that donation on that account number was under sixty. Don't know what these people do. The majority of them, usually somebody that's taking their wife or their friend who's on sick, a meal. So, we don't, we don't police the age of those who wish to take the stakeout.
And, and I think we're not gonna solve it today. I think our discussion today, what the statement was just made is by the, the manager of the program is, that's not true. And that's where we've gotta get to, is what the procedure says is exactly what we did. And anyone in the general public that says, I wanna know how the nutrition centers ran, you can hand them the procedure and say, that's the way it ran, it's ran. We're not there yet. I just, I'm trying to bring it back up and get us to that point. However, we handle the donations, however, we handle the meals, let's just have it very clear and precise. If we turn in the money once a month, once every ten days, that's what the procedure needs to say. But if it says that every day we fill out the report and take it to the treasurer, that's what we need to be doing. We need to do what the procedure says.
Yeah.
And, and I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just throw it back to you to say, I'm gonna keep bringing this up until that procedure matches our actions.
Okay, you know, according to Decco, the congregant meal program is not really to, to feed the needy. It's to get the senior citizens out active, uh, to keep them out, out of nursing homes. Uh, it's just to keep the elderly people that, you know, socialize, this, and that's the reason Decco funds it. It calls it the congregate meal program, so they can get out, you know, congregate, and basically keep them active.
And that's great, but I'm not talking about that. That's something totally separate, what I'm talking about.
Meal program.
That's, and that's fine, but I want the procedure to match what we're doing. It's a great program, I'm sure, but we're not doing what our procedure says. Just do what the procedure says, change the procedure until we get it to reflect our actions, how we manage the money, how we manage the age, all of those things. That's my point. That's all I'm asking for.
All right. All right, so we'll take no action on this one. Item number five, discuss floodplain management and operating status as well as receiving an update on training and test efforts related to C F M for both people acting in C F M road.
Judge, I put this one over here. I don't think I'm gonna be able to make the meeting tomorrow. Judge, I put this one over here. I don't think I'm gonna be able to make the meeting tomorrow with FEMA. I guess, I hope everyone, I'm gonna try to make it, but I've got some folks coming in on roads. But I just wondered, where do we stand? I wish Kena was here today. I know you went to training. Can you kind of give us an update on where you're at, Ms. Courtney? Okay.
Today this week.
But you attended a four day training session? And you only missed qualifying by two points, which is really good as I understand it. I think some people have to take it multiple times, but.
Yeah.
And then Kena is, as I understood, I asked her last week. Whenever this was posted, she called me, she said that she could not apply, you know? Yeah, I think she said she cannot apply for testing until August. You guys are going to the same place in August to test, is that right? Okay. She told me she couldn't register until August and then when she registers, she'll take the tests, as I understand. But the 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 visit tomorrow, what is that about?
We spoke to, um, he said that he thinks that this may be something they're doing throughout the state. Not coming in on a trouble ticket or anything. They're just visiting all the counties.
Home.
Handle on some questions.
Flood, flood preparedness, uh, you know, hurricane preparedness, you know? So it's wider than just flood planning.
Yes.
So that's what I need to know. Got something to say about that?
Uh, that that was my understanding. On the, on the original email, I think that that Kena had to say, I don't even know how it was going to happen with FEMA first name, but anyway, they had stated that they were looking at hurricane preparedness meeting, looking at your plans far as reviewing those, making sure that, you know, what what you're doing here, what you're doing there for your county, and are you ready for the stuff? Disaster season. And I think Ms. Kena took it as more of a targeted issue that they would come in here and say, oh yeah, by the way, we're gonna ask you for this, 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 this for previous disasters or records or whatever the case. So I went and went up to TDM and message that I've received yesterday in my section chief of recovery and planning was that they had done some research and it looks like that is a valid, uh, that the original email stated was valid, that they're kind of going around the state and multiple areas and doing these, these great things. So I don't think it's a targeted issue as Kena had originally, I guess, taken the email, but so that that's kind of what we're doing. I'm gonna be there tomorrow and then I've got another guy, Matt Hawley, he'll be here also tomorrow.
Didn't they just have a meeting in Jasper County about what plan this?
That was GLO, that was GLO, Kena wasn't there or even represented it, just that was just on replacement, replacement.
That's what I was wondering if it was related. GLO was strictly.
So it's not an audit, what I'm hearing you're saying?
That's what we were receiving, yes. Now, they may come around surprised, I mean, I don't say my word on that, but that's, that's the message that I've been sent from too.
Well, I did see an email that was forwarded to me from Kena that was, that they had placed an audit, that like a paper.
She sent that to all of us. I got that email.
I would see that email. It's like, cc. So you hear anything about that?
Yeah, and I would like to, just to, if those emails do come about like that, I would like to at least be included in those. That way I can run it up to TDM Chain or that, but they're.
I don't think this has anything to do with TDM.
Yeah, so so that's something we need to talk about. What does TDM, how does TDM interact or what's the role and responsibility from TDM to floodplain or?
That's, yeah, this is like.
I don't.
I really, I don't have that direct answer for you. I can't get it. Um, but I just know that TDM is kind of the, anything that happens with the county, FEMA, TDM needs to be in the know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that. I I sent a letter to John Flingerman about that and he's not aligned on that either. He may visit him about that. So who's gonna represent us in this meeting tomorrow? Judge, are you gonna be there?
I'll be there.
Okay. So, okay.
Yeah, Mrs. is gonna represent us.
Courtney, Courtney, will you and Kena be there?
I know. You know, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Host.
I've seen.
Yeah, it's close.
We need a I think it's the disaster, hopefully they're paying one time.
Yes, I think we're, she's with him.
All right, uh, we'll move on. Uh, item number six, discuss radio tower status and progress on use of handheld radios in the south end of the county utilizing BFD number one radio tower frequency. Okay, uh, they started yesterday, they were on site, uh, supposed to be boring for the anchor post, other radios were picked up. Uh, mobiles, I think all but two were installed in the vehicle. Uh, sheriff sent somebody to pick up the handheld. So I'm not sure of the status on operations, but I know they have, they went and picked them up. Are they able to talk that? I don't know. Mark, uh, uh, he's out today. His, his wife's in the hospital, so.
Yes.
He, he would have more on, on, on the, uh, radio. But I do know they're picked up, uh, all but two are installed in the vehicle. So and they're waiting on Orange County to give them a slave key where they can put their, they just going to have to go back and reprogram Orange County and once they're, once they get that. So, anybody have any questions on that?
I guess, we've got another line item for the radio tower update. Could we talk about it now and just kill both?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and kill both of them, uh.
Item thirteen.
Item thirteen, uh, received status regarding communication tower update. And basically, like I said, they, they started yesterday with the boring for the anchors. When they tore the tower down, uh, some of their spots were missing, not the stakes. So they were redoing, looking for the stakes and they should start, boring should have started yesterday. All right, we'll go to item number seven. Discuss options and consider path forward for grant operations related to four specific grants that were approved in eighty ninth legislature, uh, Historic Courthouse, Rural Ambulance Service, uh, Rural Law Enforcement and Volunteer Fire Department. Now, on a historical courthouse, we reached out to them. Uh, we're recipient of a past award. So, and I specifically reached out to replace air conditioning and that's not a, that's not a valid, they won't pay for air conditioning. Uh, we got turned down last week on that. So, uh, on the Rural Ambulance Service.
Judge, on that one, as I understand it, just make sure I'm right. We've already, what I was told, we've already spent or collected five billion of the potential ten billion available to them.
Yes.
So there's only five billion out there for us in the.
In, in the future, if we need it. So, you know, I guess they allocate, you know, each courthouse. So we spent five million of what we could possibly get. And then air conditioning is not one.
Which.
You've heard of sun flaming, probably. Yeah, I will. When, once the, uh, the stroke commission representative comes, I'm gonna show them what we currently have and and get a path forward from them as to where, because their conditions are built in the attic. We can't, can't do anything with it. But there's some where, where they can replace, but there's others they can't. All right, on the, uh, Rural Ambulance Service, there's ninety million dollars allocated for it. Now, the county can apply January the first, uh, for three hundred and fifty thousand of, and we, we can buy an ambulance, donate it to a rural ambulance. So in January, we will be applying for that to donate to ESD number six.
And what I, what I didn't understand that, so I read that like several times. And I'm confused on whether they're gonna have the guidelines in place on September the first and you've got thirty days to apply or they're gonna start working on it and have it done in thirty days. So the only thing I'd say is somebody a whole lot smarter than me is gonna have to understand because I'm not so sure after reading it half a dozen times that if you wait till January, you won't miss the.
Well, that, uh, they said the application will open in January and close January the thirty first, open January the first. But, uh, they should have the rules, you know, everything finalized for the grant, uh, September.
Okay, and what you just said there, that's the way I understood it the first time I read it. But I swear, when I went back and read it again and again, it looks like they're gonna give the money out from January the first to the thirty first.
Well, I talked to the, uh.
You talked to somebody, okay.
Well, that's better. Yeah, and, and they clarified that they gonna get the bill finalized in September and then application is open January the first.
Good.
So, and on the Rural Law Enforcement Grant, that's three hundred and thirty million, SB twenty-two. Uh, we, we've applied, uh, twice previously. Uh, the grant opens January the first, we'll be applying again. Um, we have to set out a compliance report, which is real fun, Courtney can testify to that. Uh, in November, December, um.
So is this just the SB twenty-two money? Is that what it is? You know, it's not nothing new?
No, this is SB twenty-two money.
That's disappointing.
All right, and the Volunteer Fire Department, two hundred and thirty-six million, um. Now, they allocated one hundred and ninety-two million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand for outstanding unfunded grant requests from fire departments. Uh, so they added forty-four million additional funding for volunteer fire departments, but that's gonna be administered to Texas Forest Service under the help in hands. Uh, so the county can't do anything, it's up to each individual volunteer fire department to apply to the grant.
Is it the fire department or the ESD that apply?
Fire department.
Fire department themselves.
Usually the fire department, uh, they, they, well, they could need the ESD, neither one.
Is there something that could, um, because I know there's some fire departments up north that needs it. I'm not taking away from our guys, but the ones up north needs it more than the ones with cottonwood.
Yeah, and I think they use the, the, you know, this is the Rural Fire Department Assistance Program, uh, the Help in Hands Program, which they get equipment, uh, from, uh, you know, like the government has surplus equipment.
Let me ask you this, could your office set up a meeting with the, at least the fire chiefs? Once you get all the information, maybe educate all those folks on what they can do. I'd hate for them to miss it out because we didn't tell them, you know?
I think most of them, I'll, I'll set up a meeting, get through Mark, but I think most of them, most of them know more about it than the, so they take it, like y'all, y'all already used, I know, uh, Burkeville, not Burkeville, but Toledo Bend is using the Forest Service to get, uh, some grant. Y'all working on it. I know when I was chief here, I got two trucks through this Help in Hand, not Help in Hand.
And you can apply for it, the truck, they try to spread that.
Yeah, and that's where the one hundred and ninety-two million come into unfunded, uh, requests. So it's not an accounting can apply for, but we, we can make sure they're aware of it.
Perfect.
All right. Going to item number eight, discuss and consider adopting a road bond policy that protects taxpayer assets from uninsured damages that might occur resulting, as a result of oil and gas exploitation, logging activities and heavy hauling. Uh, the discussion will include bond amounts and weight amounts along with an overview and adoption of formal contract of agreement.
Please.
So, just put on the, again, last week, I asked for some additional time to receive it. And I've been working on that, uh. So my recommendation with regard to this, it is absolutely possible. Um, I think the, the thought before was, hey, we can't do this because, uh, if they have an overweight permit from the state, then well, uh, the, the overweight permits from the state are for overweight vehicles being used in the county in general. I've learned that you can look on the DMB website and find out every overweight permit that's been issued for, I think, per day. I've, I've learned something new there. Uh, but it's this road use agreements, county's use road use agreements, they're really more targeted than just an overall, uh, overweight permit because you're passing through. Uh, for example, if you've got an oil and gas operation that's going to be in a particular place in the county that's going to be using specific county roads and they're going to be using, uh, heavy equipment there, you can negotiate with that particular company with regard to a certain duration of time, with regard to certain, uh, county roads. Talking about, you know, the condition and keeping it in the position it's in and you're creating a management, like, well, and, and the agreement would include a bond. Uh, and essentially ensuring that this company is clear, is damaged to the road, then they're gonna fix it or they're gonna find it. Uh, that is, it's absolutely lethal. Um, how, I'm, I'm kind of thinking about how to manage a program like that. I guess it would be a matter of y'all being familiar with your areas and knowing what's going on. Um, I know in preseason, there's a company coming in that's gonna be using a couple of county roads, but they contacted the commissioner. Hopefully there will be more of that, I don't know. It is, uh, but it would be something that we would need to negotiate and approve prior to whatever project you do. Uh, I do have, I've looked at different road use agreements from different counties, all over the state. Uh, I don't have a regular protective or form that I would recommend in three days, I'm not there yet. Uh, but it's entirely possible.
I guess the question to the court today is, you're doing really good work. Do we want her to continue to pursue this? That's really the question, because we're not, are we ready to vote on it? Are we, do you need more?
Yeah, I think that, like, each individual agreement uh, approved, it's gonna be.
A contract. Be a contract.
So it's a matter of us recognizing the issue, being in contact with the company, negotiating how to getting it.
So, so with that being said, it sounds like maybe we should go ahead and take a vote on something of that nature that, just kind of paraphrasing, it says, uh, just potentially, uh, a motion would be to approve, uh, the opportunity for commissioners to go into contractual agreements with any company or any entity that is using county roads for heavy hauling with the details to be worked out on a case by case basis.
Sure, agreement.
Do we, then, then is that?
As long as y'all agree that y'all want to pursue, uh, you know, road use agreements.
My question would be.
My question would be, loggers will come in next week, we don't have court for twice a month.
Well, so here's, here's my thinking, and the thing about loggers is, they are, okay, and let me go back to the permit. If we are pursuing a road use agreement with the company because of their use of the road, and they say, hey, we have an overweight permit to the state, then that cuts it off. We won't be able to. But here's my, my thinking about loggers. Loggers are all over the place, and they may be in one place one day, and if they can really make good time, they may be in a completely different place the other day. So I don't know that this would be appropriate for logging. I think it's gonna be more of a, more appropriate for a long-term company. We're gonna be in this area for the next three months. We're gonna be hauling up and down this road X amount of time a day.
That's pretty much what the loggers do, they don't bounce all over the place. They have to have their loading equipment, their skitters, and they have to complete this spot, well, you know, decide to move over here to the next spot. I think that it would be. I was talking with a logging contractor. He was telling me that in Louisiana, they have a permit system where more or less, it's not a charge. It's just that they have logged in Newton County to say that they're gonna be hauling logs this, these two county roads. And the commissioner goes out, and if he sees them, he asks them where are their permits? It's not more or less having a four or five-page permit, it's that they have to have a number. You can have it on the phone or whatever, you know, if it say that red blocks or whoever's hauling one of my county roads. I call it, it's a county, and that's, that's my biggest problem is that we got, there's no way we can keep up with loggers. And they got some that don't, they couldn't care about your county road flipping. We spent a lot of money on going behind loggers and repairing our roads. And so what it does is accountability system that anyone coming to haul your county roads, that they have more or less checked in. And we could have a standing permit, like the one you're talking about, where we go through and negotiate with, with, say, some of the local loggers and agree that, hey, this is standard, and this is common, and it's feasible for both of us. It's not so much a charge, it's just that accountability, because we had, in the last term, we had, last court, we had a month there where we all turned in how much we worked on it, going a little months. And it got up there a thousand, I think, I think y'all, like thirty, thirty-two loads sometime. Because then year in February, like I said, there were all the loggers that flood our area. And they tear our road, and that's the worst time, it's when the ground's saturated, and everything you put on there end up, you know, potholes and mashed out into ditches and everything, so.
Yeah, they go for the driest, the driest area they can work in.
Oh, yeah, they, we spent a lot of money behind loggers, and that's the only thing, accountability, because I've had them come drag logs down my roads and take a bulldozer. Bulldozer, all the material off the road and that kind of thing. And, you know, if they can do that in a week's time and get out of here without somebody noticing them on the road, it happens, it happened to me.
And what you do, if the commissioner pulled up to them and said, hey, what's your permit number? If they don't have one, then what?
Now, he'd tell them that you gotta go get a permit, you know the rule, you know, the first time. Well, then we can, we can get them off our road, get them off our road.
Or to, if there's somebody that doesn't get a road use agreement, or doesn't get the permit, or whatever it might be, but what is our, what are you doing?
I think one thing is.
And that person told me that, he said, they don't, they don't threaten to take you to jail or nothing, they just tell you, hey, when I come back, you better have a permit if you're gonna be working on this road.
She's the permit.
He said the, the parish, that was Louisiana, I know they get it from the.
Yeah, and if they, if they have an overweight permit from the state, then all of it's.
Well, the thing you gotta remember, the overweight permit is for state highways only.
Yeah.
No. Because the state doesn't own.
So when it talks about overweight, it talks about how the counties receive part of the city for the overweight. And that's why the counties are informed of the overweight, when you can go and see who's there. Because if there's damage to your road from this person, this vehicle that has an overweight from you, they have to put up a bond, state level, and the county can claim on it, bond for those bonds. Yeah, now, it says it requires a lawsuit, but it could probably be very basic and.
Well, I just know that in some of the counties, you can go down some of these roads, there's no big trucks, no trucks allowed. I mean, so I don't know how you should.
So, so the roads, the roads, there are, you can set up weight limitations on bridges and those, we have those. Oftentimes, when I T N shut down, they're ignored, and that's when you see people hustling on the south end of the county because they're driving through the neighborhoods, hazardous materials in a rural, in a neighborhood. But, but just for clarity, a lot of what Commissioner White's talking about is not our local residents. We have a lot of good people that are loggers that do really good work, but we also have people that come into our county from far away and do logging, and those are the types. And I hate to, but you don't take care of someone else's house as much as you take care of yours. So our people tend to do better, I mean, I have a good relationship, but I guess with the loggers and the timber people. But the, the question I have is, so I have a meeting tomorrow with some people around oil and gas. So what I'm hearing today is, if I meet with those folks and they say we're gonna use these two roads, and they have, and they've mapped it out, and I say, okay, what I would like to, for us to do is for you guys to put up a signature bond. You know, you go to the county attorney's office, you sign a document that says you pledge a bond of this much money to maintain, to help maintain these roads to the condition they're in when you start. And then I bring that to court on Tuesday, it sounds like we could vote to do that? Okay, so I'm good on that action item, but I like the ideal of the permitting process. You know, there's gonna be all kinds of things you work through, but just remember this, commissioners have full authority to shut down any county road they deem to be under maintenance. So when a logging company begins to destroy a road, you shut it down. Park a dump truck in the middle of it, put cones up and say, sorry, the road shut down, we're under maintenance. So we, it is a, it is a mutual work together type thing, because what we can't do is just say, well, we can't do anything with them, and they're going down the road, and the road's pumping, and then you've got cars trying to go down it. We have to be able to, and we can by law to say, get the trucks off the roads, this road is now under maintenance until further notice. And you can put roadblocks up, and so we do have some teeth when it comes to that. The permitting process will work if we use our resource. But I don't know what it looks like.
Okay.
Yeah, and it goes away for a bit before I call him.
All right, so what action do we need to take on this item?
Misty keep working?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, please.
So we'll table this item until Misty does, does her thing.
Well, let me ask you, so Misty, and I hate to go back, should we table it, or should we just say no action and take it off the agenda? What's your, because I've got what I need, I'm gonna.
Think that you can take, I think we're gonna have to through each agreement. So no action.
No action, good.
Set aside a doctrine road bond policy, we're gonna do that, anyway, we're gonna have a road use agreement.
And next week, the agenda item will read totally separate and have names? Yeah, okay, thank you. Yep.
All right, so rephrase that on item number eight, we'll take no action. All right, item number nine, approve engagement letter with Barbara Slate, C P A, to assist the county auditor with preparing the annual financial report, excluding the independent auditors' reports and letters for the year December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four. This is, we had talked about it the other day, the last agenda item had twenty-three on it, so we needed for twenty-three and twenty-four.
So just for clarity, so, so we use Barbara, and I read her letter. So we use Barbara to prepare the financials, which is the, basically the summary between the county and the outside auditor, correct?
She's gonna write, she's actually going to write our financials that normally the outside auditor writes. But she's going to actually write, she's actually going to be preparing part of it for her. Because Sharon Reed is going to be the actual audit, Barbara's going to write the name, so she does that already.
I make the motion that we approve the engagement letter between Barbara and the county attorney's office, preparing the annual financial reports, excluding that caption for the years ending the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Attorney.
What?
She's gonna be working with.
I said attorney, I.
It was a test, it was just a test, just seeing if anybody's listening.
Thank you.
So with, with her doing this, will that help speed up our, our twenty-three and twenty-four?
Yeah, we're, we're in it.
Outside.
See the last email?
All right, yeah, then ask another question, on our twenty-two audit.
Milton said kid finishes third, so to Chuck, finalized. So Chuck just basically goes through and makes sure everything's, as bad as described, everything's good, and then signs off on it, and did it on the very. So Milton has finished and has released it to Reed.
Okay, sounds wonderful, but I think I've heard that before.
All right, I agree, all right, first foul made in motion, and I'll say, say goodbye, Commissioner Hudson, all in favor? All against? All right. Item number ten, approve purchasing policy and procedures.
At this time right now, we're going to add, because we're going to revamp on some things and just add to our current. Her county attorneys are going to add to our current policy procedures instead of. We're gonna stay with that.
Okay. Can I ask you a question on that? Is this around the P O system? Before the court votes on that, could we have a workshop with all the county department heads, elected officials? May not be a happy workshop, but at least we can kind of do alignment and hear from everyone, and then bring it to the court for approval, so we can let everybody weigh in.
So then we can have the workshop next week.
Whenever you're ready.
Well, you were recommending.
We're going to schedule a workshop and then.
Your original sponsor is table.
Because it's going to come back.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion with table, item number ten.
Second.
All right, motion made by me, say goodbye, Commissioner White, all in favor? All right, item number eleven, approve contract, A T and T contract, daddy, M I S one four one six oh one four five. It's priced and scheduled with A T and T for one year, and this is, I won't take no action on this. This is for one year, it's for internet, for some, some of the offices. We now have spectrum and then high line coming in, so I basically want to see if we can get a better pricing from spectrum, or, you know, better service.
Because we had a guy come in here about a phone service, not long ago. Yeah, that one is, is different.
No, it's, this is just internet.
Okay.
Some of the internet. You know, if we can get a better deal with spectrum or high line.
Okay.
I don't know, but I just want to see what, you know, we've got all this fiber coming in, I want to see what, what offers we can get.
Okay.
For, and what type of service?
So eleven and twelve?
Yeah, eleven and twelve, we'll just take no action on those. All right, item number thirteen, we already, is he due to case tell?
I did get an update from Sheriff, and I texted him when we were talking about it, and he said, depends on where they are at, it's hit and miss. So I said, so the fire department didn't fix the problem, and I guess I can say this, can I say this? Yeah, so, he said, yes, you can talk on the fire department channel, but the babies don't like it because they can't hear each other due to it being on the channel, because they, they both have to switch over, so, but at least if they get aligned, I mean, they just lose. It's not, it's not perfect, but it's better than what it was, but they can, but go ahead. Even cut it, that's funny, but. Yeah, it sounds like if, you know, if they switch over to the fire station and the other person doesn't, then they may not be able to communicate. So they, they have to, if they're gonna go to the fire station, everyone's gotta go to the fire station. But at least if they get out in the woods with bad people, they can all get on the phone.
Right, better than we were, they know what to do.
Yeah.
Good, all right. Item number fourteen, budget amendments. Okay, and then we go to item number fifteen, payment of bills.
Yeah, deals that we're gonna pay this for. General fund, thirty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Road and Ridge General, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Division Special Precinct, one, five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Division Special Precinct, two, twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Voter Registration, five hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty. Soap operating, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-nine dollars and technical housing fund, a hundred and thirty-two dollars. For total of all, five hundred and seventy, seventeen dollars and fifty.
I tell you, it pays me and Prentice for Tasha to go on vacation, I'll see that.
Or no bills being, but we didn't pay a bill.
I gotta.
Catch up, Nick.
Yeah, I got a feeling we'll be, we'll be large in George next time. I make a motion with table bills as presented.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Say goodbye, Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
All right, mate.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought this, I thought Danny said that. Say goodbye, Commissioner White, all in favor? What do you judge? All against? All right.
Don't talk about that, that, huh? We're gonna go into executive, help with the county, can we?
Yes. All right, we're gonna go into executive.
Second session for potential litigation.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, potential litigation.
Judge.
I get birds, I get. Alright y'all we're back on. I need a motion from the left side.
Make a motion that we adjourned this meeting.
Alright.
Sure you want?
Motion made and I'll second, I'm gonna give you a ten. Motion made by uh, Commissioner White, second by me, all in favor?
Aha.
All against?